This meeting of the Regional School Committee at 6:32 PM on Tuesday, April 6th. And we will begin by a roll call attendance. Mr. Demling?
Demling present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington present.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny present.
Ms. Lord?
Lord present.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger present.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser present.
And McDonald present. I'm not seeing Ms. Spitzer, Mr. Sullivan. It's like, oh. Ms. Spitzer, are you, are you present?
I am. So just having some connectivity issues. Present.
Great, thanks. And so we are in order and we are joined this evening by our new student rep, Ms. Ruby Kane. Welcome. And also Assistant Superintendent during Cunningham and of course Dr. Morris. And Ms. Sharkis is our minutes taker. Our first item is to approve our minutes and welcome, Mr. Sullivan. So we have minutes from our January 14th meeting with the APEA Executive Board. And the minutes from our joint meeting with Union 26 and then our meeting alone on March 23rd. So I will note, I think on June, the January 14th notes, I noticed on the top of page two, where it said open floor. Ms. Mongla, I think it's, I think that her last name is Miss Sells. And I think, and her role is APEA Unit A. Co-chair, not universal co-chair. Ms. Seeger and then Ms. Stanser?
I noticed that on the March 23rd meeting, I'm not listed as in attendance. And I'm there because I'm also in the minute or I'm, I have comments in there.
Ms. Stanser? Ms. Stanser, you're muted.
Sorry. I just have two typos on page three of the January meeting. The paragraph that starts Ms. McDonald thanked, if you go down, it says in collaboration with, I think it should be with, just minor thing. And then, where was I? On the first page of the March 23rd minutes, Mr. Manino, the paragraph that starts Mr. Manino, I think it should be an actively works to seek feedback. Not seed feedback.
On that same note, on the same page up just above that, Ms. McDonald described that we are, instead of continuing to expand, I think it said, we are considering to extend. And I also think for the attendance list, I wonder if it might be helpful to, instead of separating out Regional School Committee and Union 26, just list the names. And then in parentheses, say which committees they are members of. Because, but I believe Ms. Sarah Hall is, was in attendance and she's not listed. Ms. Kenny?
So on January 14th, I was not there, but my name is on there. And on March 23rd, I was there, but my name is not on there. And then I think also on the 23rd, I don't think Sarah was there.
Okay.
I don't think she came that day.
Sorry.
That's okay.
On the 23rd, also under item nine, which I can't see a page number, sorry. So under night, number nine, School Committee Announcements, Ms. Lord, I think commented is correct, not commended. Are there any other edits that folks are seeing? Seeing none, and I will make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended of January 14th and March 23rd, 2021. Is there a second?
Second?
Moved by McDonald and second by Spitzer and it is a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling I.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington I.
Ms. Kenny?
Oh, I haven't, I wasn't here on the 14th. So should I not vote on that one?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So one abstained and one yay.
Should we amend the, Dr. Morris?
The train has left the station. So you gotta just file through the vote.
Okay.
Yeah. And I was going to say you are able to vote on minutes, even if you weren't there, as long as you believe them to be accurate and you have no reason to believe that they were misrepresented the meeting.
Oh, okay. Well, then sure, yay.
Ms. Lord?
Lord I.
Ms. Seeger?
I.
Ms. Spitzer?
I.
Mr. Sullivan? I didn't catch that. I think you might be muted. Sullivan I and McDonald I. The motion passes unanimously. Oh, Ms. Stanser, sorry.
Stanser I.
Thank you. The motion passes. My cheat sheet is out of date. So that's why I don't like, everybody's out of order. So I apologize, but the motion passed nine to zero. And now we'll move on to public comment. And as mentioned, there's, there is no written comment this evening. And we did note that on the website. So in case you go looking for it, you'll know that it's, it's, we don't have any, but we do have some voice message comments. And I will play those now. I'll note that this first one, the very first one that I'm playing was received two weeks ago, actually almost three weeks ago, and I neglected to play it two weeks ago when we met. So I apologize to the commenter and I am playing that this evening.
Hi, I'm Alita Rutter. I go to Amherst and to ARHS. I know that this has been put out of ninety people's minds because of the pandemic. But it's really important to me that when we go back to school, we have adequate access to period products. I get a period every month. Most people who have periods understand that they're far from comfortable. There's the obvious discomfort from the fact that there's literal blood dripping out of you. Most times when I'm on my period, it's accompanied by a strange crapping feeling, as if my gut was being torn apart from the inside. I also often get a headache. I occasionally feel feverish, like I'm going to pass out. Periods are incredibly hard to deal with. The first few times I got one, I stayed in my room all day trying to get the cramps to go away because it hurt too much. Most menstruation, I have to deal with the physical problems after a while. But the social problems are a little harder to figure out. For some reason in our culture, periods are seen as gross, like something die. At my school, I find myself doing everything I can to stop my periods from blowing around my period. It's super embarrassing to have your peers know such an intimate thing about you. Even unwrapping a pad in the bathroom is nerve wracking. Going to the nurse is even scarier because not only your peers can find out, but you have to tell the nurse as well. I'm asking the period products I put in the bathroom so that students can easily access them without the embarrassment of going to the nurse. Thank you.
My name is Alyssa Banker. I'm the resident of Ucanton and I'm a para educator at work at Amherst Regional High School. I'm calling today to urge the school committee to agree with solid cost of living adjustments to staff wages for the coming year and to strive for transparency and budget decisions for the coming year. The austerity of the current budget comes at a great cost to many beloved programs such as art, tech, family outreach and staff position. I am disappointed to see that the APEA request for a 2% cost of living adjustment was rejected by the school committee, while Superintendent Morris has received a 4.3% rate. While I keep my respect to Superintendent Morris' leadership, our district must value all staff members incredibly hard work this year when making budgetary decisions. Up to this point, there has been no concrete specific commitment to a cost of living adjustment for staff. I and other members at the APEA support teachers and staff receiving a cost of living increase as close as possible to the 2% requested by the APEA. Many staff in this district, particularly our UDC staff like me, currently struggle to support ourselves and our families financially. The lack of a cost of living adjustment will affect all staff, but particularly our most vulnerable school employees may be even more difficult to live in the midst of global pandemic. All staff must be supported so our students and community can thrive. Thank you, guys.
Hello, my name is Carol Charrington. I live in Pelham. I have two grown children who went through the public schools in Pelham and Amherst. And I currently work as a para educator at Amherst High School. I'm calling to respectfully request the school committee to agree to a cost of living adjustment to staff wages for the coming year and to strive for transparency and budgetary decisions in this coming year. The austerity of the current budget comes at a great cost to many beloved programs, art, technology, family outreach and staff positions. We are disappointed in the schools that the cost of living that the union requested, which was the 2% request cost of living adjustment, was rejected by the school committee. And yet we've seen sizable percentage increases for those in administration. So up to this point, up to this point, there's been no concrete reply from the school committee about what could be offered. And I and many other staff members and community members support educators receiving a decent cost of living increase as close to the 2% requested by the union. Okay. Thank you very much for listening and we look forward to hearing of your work.
So that concludes our public comment and the names, I believe, are will be included in our, in our minutes. And before we go into the next one, I want to apologize. I neglected to introduce one of our guests this evening, Ms. Lauren Mills, who is joining us to present part of the School Equity Task Force report presentation. So welcome, Ms. Mills. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Morris for the superintendent's update.
Sure. I'll start it and Ms. Cunningham will also offer some updates as well. And I know we're in a time crunch because there is an executive session later. So as I was trying to do, I'll try to be brief. But the graduation survey for high school seniors and families will go out this week. We're trying to, there, there is some fixed choices that we have to make in terms of a number of students who can attend, a number of families who can attend. And like many other communities, we're going to have to make some challenging decisions. But the good news is we are, you know, one of our staff members was over at the potential site over at Look Park today. Loved it, had lots of good ideas and will be engaging again, all the students and, and families in making the best decision as we move forward for an outdoor graduation for our seniors. I want to second what Ms. McDonald said and acknowledge and appreciate Ruby Kane for joining the committee. I also want to thank that Emily Gribko, who sent, in my opinion, an outstanding job as a student rep for quite a while. And Ms. McDonald and I had a good meeting to transition, make that transition and support Ruby with the transition. Ruby and I have known each other for quite some time back at Crocker Farm. So I'm really happy to see how much she's grown and that she'll be part of this committee. So welcome, Ruby. Really happy to have you. Want to thank Mr. Siddique, the high school principal. Last Wednesday hosted a Google Meet for students who wanted to talk about the hate crimes and acts of violence against Asian Americans in Pacific Island or the AAPI population over the past year to work with students and faculty to ensure that the high school is responding firmly and appropriately to what is being experienced by students here as well as people across the country. So thank you, Mr. Siddique, for that. This is, I want to thank our staff. There's a number of things going on for Autism Week, Acceptance Week this week. So today I was able to catch a couple of minutes of this. There was a college support discussion where a number of colleges who have worked successfully integrating students with disabilities into the higher educational field, met with students and those moderated by our staff. Tomorrow, there's a conversation about adult services as students who are transitioning out of our school district. And Thursday, there is alumni and current student panel from the high school Thursday afternoon from five to seven. And some of it's again, the panel and some of it's a discussion and celebration after the panel. So all are welcome and that information's on our website. And you know, kudos to all the staff members who are putting that on and families and students who are going to sit on that. Couple other quick ones from me, some good news that in terms of the vaccination front, the town of Amherst, as well as the town of Northampton facilitated a second educators or school staff only vaccination effort. And I think I mentioned the last time we met that I felt like most of our staff who wanted to be vaccinated had gotten vaccinated or had at least gotten a shot. As we moved along and this was confirmed, this session in the Amherst was for all towns east of the Connecticut River in Hampshire County. There was 80 appointments and when I checked about an hour before starting last Saturday, 34 were unclaimed. So to me, that means, that indicates that we're probably at a saturation point of staff members looking for vaccines, being able to get them. And, and you know, by all indications, the majority of our staff are interested in getting them. We don't, there's no data source for that. It's all anecdotal. But that's what I continued to hear. That being said, I want to thank the towns of Amherst, Northampton for providing that resource for educators and our educators who are working together along this front. But it's certainly those, just to be clear too, the town really wanted me to emphasize this. It's not like those vaccines went away. They were integrated in the other appointments that are for non educator or for anyone who is eligible that the town is doing. It's not like these are lost appointments. They just get integrated in and more people are able to get vaccinated on their normal clinics. But it was a good data point to say that we are pretty close to saturation. And that feels really good because I, you know, I think that hopefully makes everyone feel a little more comfortable and confident. Got two more, just some data, initial data on return to in person. At the high school, our data shows about 60% of students are opting to return to in-person learning. And actually only about 20, 25% are planning to use transportation or the buses, which helps us out frankly about the buses. At the middle school, that number is a bit higher. So about 69% of students are slated to return. And about 50% of students are slated to take the bus. I should have mentioned at the high school, we believe we can maintain a six foot distance in most, but not all classes. It sort of depends on, you know, individual classrooms and how many students were in the class and how many are showing up. But we feel like we can get most of the way there. We do not believe we'll be at a three foot distance for any of our classes. It will all be, you know, six or relatively close to six feet. At the middle school, looks like we'll be at five and a half feet of distancing. That's more evened out across the classes. We weren't able to get to get quite to six, but five and a half again is, is ahead of the vast majority of districts in Massachusetts, most of whom are at three feet of distancing. Summit Academy has 51% of students returning. They have some students now on the voluntary return plan. I went, I was over there today. It was great to see some students. Some that Ruby and I know from Crocker Farm, actually. So that was neat. And since they were quite little and, and so, and I was able to talk to some students and staff members. So they're, they're, they're going to be a shade over 50% of their students. Again, smaller sample size because of Summit. But I wanted to update the committee and the community on that. And my last one I had is sharing a little bit about fall. Certainly may want to have this on an upcoming agenda at some point. And this was shared with the committee electronically, I believe this morning. The state, Mr. Sheen and I were on a webinar from the state yesterday about virtual schooling. And he was for districts that showed some interest in maintaining some level of virtual education. I think the, the air was taken out a little bit of Tim and I, you know, when we recognized that from the state's perspective, some things frankly aren't very realistic about maintaining that. The application is much like becoming, almost creating a charter school in your district. It is creating a completely separate and autonomous school next year. It would have to have a name. It would have to have a staffing model, have to have nurse, it'd have to have a food service delivery plan. All this is due, by the way, for districts who are interested in the next about three and a half weeks. They talked about a ratio of 35 students to one instructor. So we're talking about radically different class size than what we experienced or we have implemented. Also, school choice students would not be eligible for the virtual school, even if they were existing in the district. So there was some, some, what seemed to us to be some very unusual rules around that. I think implied, in my opinion and Tim's opinion, was that we already have two virtual schools in Massachusetts. There are schools of choice and that students who are interested may access those. But I will say the bar is extremely high and perhaps not attainable for moderate sized districts to create, fully create a school in the next month. It's due, actually it's due exactly a month from today with a fully formed staffing model. So the documents that accompanied that were emailed to the committee. So it really has changed our perspective on perhaps what's possible for the fall. And perhaps at an upcoming meeting, we can go a little more in depth, but I did want to share that with the committee and the community that a more casual approach of maintaining some virtual options is not going to be supported by our state. And, and we had, you know, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but we, Tim and I had a hard time thinking that school choice students would have no access to a virtual program because they are full members of the districts. There were, there were numerous challenges that we had, we had many other districts had on that call. And I think, you know, when we do start talking, I know in Pelham, we're going to have that conversation next week, starting to talk about fall 2021 and probably should do that at the region sometime soon as well. But I wanted to share that that was the update that we had from DSE and the, we sent some of the documentation. I think the slides also, when we get them, I'll share with the committee. Before we transition to Ms. Cunningham's update, I wanted to pause and see if there's any questions for me.
And Ms. Seeger?
Yeah. In terms of the, thank you for the information on the high school and the middle school and the update on returning this spring. I was wondering if you could also, if this isn't violating anything, talk about the school bus situation since it's part of the logistics.
Sure. So as tomorrow at five o'clock is the deadline for the schools to make sure that they have accurate school bus and, you know, the transportation information to share with the transportation department. They then will be spending the next week and a half putting together routes. And I think particularly for Shutsberry and Leverett, I know there's some question about how that'll work. And once they get the accurate information, they'll be working on that. And I can share that back with the committee. I don't think we meet for a little while after this meeting, but I can share that electronically. So people are aware of how that is going to shake out. I see there's a follow-up.
Yeah. Ms. Seeger?
Yeah. My concern is with, with the elementary school and the time change. So is that going to be part of what you'll share?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the short story is the elementary school in Leverett and Shutsberry are going to start at the same time that they starting this week. It's really about how do we get middle school and high school students? Are they going to share a bus and then just come down the hill? Or there are going to be a dedicated bus that comes earlier. And some of that just depends on the yield. I gave you the percentages, but the percentages don't mean anything. It really is the number of students in Shutsberry and Leverett that are going to drive that decision. And until that's cold, which we'll have tomorrow, it's hard to make a determination. But absolutely, I, you know, I know that's a concern and I'll be able to share that with the committee likely before the break.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I have three questions. Hopefully the first two are very short. So for the virtual schools. So thank you for that. I also had read the DSE instruction and it seemed, in addition to all the other complications that you mentioned, to be financially completely unfeasible for a district like ours and our budget situation. So even if we wanted to drop everything and, and run, run like the dickens of the next three months and do all the things you talked about, it doesn't seem, didn't seem to me like we had the, the financial wherewithal. So are we still going to have the ability to though, to do something for our, our small number of students that may have a severe medical situation? Where if COVID isn't completely wrapped up, which probably won't be 100% wrapped up by the time we go back in fall. But if we, you know, if we have children, two students that are immunocompromised and whatnot, you know, what, what are our ways to accommodate them? And then I'll throw you a second completely unrelated topic, if you want to answer it at the same time. Can you just talk about the MCAS update and its, its impact particularly for our seniors next year?
Yep. So on the first one, they did talk about students who are auto immunocompromised and they did not frame it like this, I think because of legal reasons. But the sense I got is that we would treat them like other students who can't attend school because of health reasons. We have home health aid and home health programs that we provide now for students for a variety of reasons who can't attend school. And I think what I heard, what was implied in the comments and Tim heard the same thing was that we would use the same kind of model that we have now with home-based tutoring and access to courses that way. So they said an FAQ document would clarify that, that FAQ document has not been released. But when it is, I'll be sure to share it with the committee and come back to share that update with the community. The second one is that MCAS are no longer a graduation requirement for the class of 2022. So given the interruptions and given where they are in their education, the state is no longer requiring, passing the MCAS to receive a diploma for that class.
Any other questions? Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I'm happy to come back around. So sixth grade to the middle school. So I understand that this is a massively busy month for you and the rest of the district with regards to all of the dates for in-person return. And, and I believe we have, talking about sixth grade to the middle school at this committee's level on May 4th. Are we going to be, so the question I have for you, Dr. Morris, are we going to be ready to hit the ground running with that process? So that we can really engage, do a high engagement, time efficient process? The reason I ask is that ideally it would be good to be able, for our districts that may, may decide to send, if, if the regional committee agrees, to send six to the middle school for them to also have time to make the decision. I'm thinking of other committees that I said, another committee I sit on, and there's three other towns as well. It would be good for those districts to be able to make that decision by the end of this school year. And if we start this process in earnest on May 4th, it really leaves us a couple of months before the, the school year ends. And so I'm just wondering if in terms of timeline, you, as of this date, do you think that, that, that's still realistic to achieve?
I'll be quick on my answer. No, I don't think it's realistic to achieve. I think the, the community's capacity to engage in a question of that magnitude as students are returning to school, separate from our central office. That's not where I'm going with my comments, but you know, that's the date at which, you know, our middle school, high school students are returning when we be starting that engagement. I, I'm hard pressed to, to think that that could occur under that timeline without feeling incredibly rushed. I know we had a school start time change that occurred under a pretty quick timeline, but that wasn't a six, you know, a four week timeline. And I think this changed the magnitude of it is quite a bit better and just bigger. And some of it's just logistics and legally, you know, how the change would occur given the different districts. If we were one K to 12 district, I might say, yeah, we can, we can do that engagement. I think the reality is some of the details are going to be highly relevant on financial and a legal ground are going to likely take longer, even if we started today, to fully resolve where I think the committee can be ready. And that, that's relying on folks like legal counsel and, you know, the Mass Association of Regional Schools and how that all shakes out as well as the towns, all four towns. So I think, can we absolutely start the engagement this spring? Absolutely. I, I have a hard time thinking that towns will be ready to make a decision in the middle of, I'm thinking of the other towns too. There, there's, there's Springtown meeting that's happening. A lot of energy will go to budgets in Springtown meetings. They start up on May 1st, but then they go on and Shutsberry is not, I think, till June or 12th, something like that. I think, thank you. And then Pelham and Leverett are towards the beginning of May. So I think in bandwidth, I think the goal, my personal goal, I know this is going to be on an upcoming agenda is how do we build our capacity? So uh, I think in bandwidth, I think the goal, my personal goal, I know this is going to be on an upcoming agenda, is how do we build our capacity to talk about it? How do we acculturate the community to think about it? I know we did some of that last year, but that was pre-COVID. And uh, I don't think picking up right where we left off is going to be where, uh, is it going to be people's mindset? So um, what I'd like to do at the next meeting, which I know we're getting creeping into agenda planning and this McDonald can stop me if, if this was. Uh, maybe we'll talk about during agenda planning, because I think we should have a conversation of what, what, what our expectations are for that agenda item and how to move forward. But I think that'd probably be the more appropriate place for that discussion.
I agree. Ms. King.
Do you have any insight on MCAS for class of twenty-twenty-three?
Nope, they, uh, well, yeah, that's not true. Yes, I do. Uh, at this point, the uh, state has only relaxed the rules, so to speak, for the class of twenty-twenty-two. I think the expectation for class of twenty-three will probably be unchanged from the expectations for classes that have come before it and will come after. That's my, that's my understanding and, and they, they continue to say to be determined or we'll share more information. So as I get more, I'll be able to share that. But um, at this point, all I know about is uh, all I've been told about is twenty-twenty-two. There is an alternate path for twenty-twenty-one, like we did last year of competent determination. And uh, they did help a couple of students graduate who, who needed some support last spring. And we're, you know, we're looking if there's any students who need that for the spring as well.
Any other questions for Dr. Morris? Not seeing any. Turn it back to you.
Sure, I'll turn it over to Ms. Cunningham.
Hello, everyone. Typically, in November, our HR department has an opportunity or, or for many years have had an opportunity to report on some of the diversity equity work that's taking place in the district. And, you know, this past November, we were not able to due to the pandemic and many of the other things that took precedence. So I'm just going to briefly follow Dr. Morris's lead to try to run through some of the things that we have been doing this year. And I will read from the document really quickly. So remember, tip, I'm normally have a large PowerPoint, we normally take about twenty-five minutes. But I'm going to just run through this as quickly as possible. So as far as staffing, the information on our DSE, uh, which is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education website, is still unchanged. So the data that we presented uh, last year remains. And that data just shows that we're doing a really good job at slowly increasing our number of staff who identify as a person of color in the region. And we are also doing a better job at retaining our staff at the region. So many of our curriculum has been reviewed and some modifications have been made. And uh, we're still at the secondary level, still working on making changes to the curriculum to make it more uh, diverse and helping our students to have access to different curriculum that has pictures and um, tells the real history is what we're looking to do and will continue to do at that level. Many of our staff members have attended Joe Trust. And he is the founder of the dismantling white supremacist culture program. So approximately a hundred and thirty of our staff have attended. And this is a hundred and thirty individuals across all of our bargaining units. We've also had Goldie Mohammed, Dr. Bettina Love, and Kimmy Carlos speak to our staff and present on topics such as race, racism, abolitionist thinking, and youth and the trauma of racism. Goldie Mohammed continues to work with the high school. And um, she's there to help them with the professional development that they're doing and creating action plans to move the high school forward on these topics. Kimmy Carlos, who I mentioned was one of our keynote speaker, she is also going to come back and speak to families and caregivers of youths so that she can talk about the intersectionality of trauma and race. And that'll be upcoming either the end of April or sometime early May. We usually have a fall professional development half-day. And this year, I'm pleased to announce that we were able to offer two of these days. So we had one in the fall and we recently had one last month. Um, many of our teachers led the fall professional development opportunities this uh, March. Many of our um, teachers just facilitated a conversation among content areas. And this is the first time in a long time that they were able to stay either at grade-level cohorts or content-area cohorts, meaning all math teachers joined together, all English teachers, all related service workers joined together. So across the vertical alignment, they were able to just have conversations and find out what each person is doing in regards to racism and reviewing their own bias. Along with the items listed above, some of the schools have had book groups and community readings and have read books such as This Book is Anti-Racist by Tiffany Jewell. Some have also read How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram Kendi. And many schools are currently reviewing their policies and practices that disproportionately identifies one group of students for services. And the middle school has developed a partnership with an organization called PK, which is Parent Institute for Quality Education. And just going from their website, it's a national organization that engage, empower, and transform parents to actively engage in their parent, in their child's education and strengthen parent-school collaboration. So how do we know it's working? We use the typical evaluation system, whether it's quantitative or qualitative information. We get this directly from staff via surveys, via exit interviews. And also the decrease in the number of investigations that HR has had to do. So that's my brief update and I am open to any questions that the committee may have.
Thank you, that was uh, impressive. Condensing that into that, that list and, and also accomplishing all of that during, during this pandemic year. So, and questions, Ms. Stanser.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Cunningham, that was very nice to hear all of those things. I'm wondering, is, do you have a document that you could actually share with us that has this information in it?
I do have the document that I just wrote with my notes on it. But um, I can always put something together and share it with the school committee.
That would be, I, thank you, would be appreciated.
Mr. Demling.
Um, yeah, thank you, that was a very uh, comprehensive, impressive list. Um, a couple of questions, um, a, a year or so ago, um, we, we talked about uh, that we, we had introduced anti-bias training into our um, hiring process in terms of people that participate on screening committees and interview committees. I'm just wanting to give, is, is that something that we're still doing and, and how is that going? Is it, has that been well-received? And do, do you feel like now that we've had a bit of time with it working, do you feel like that's improved the process? Uh, and then my second question, I forgot, so I'll just stick with the first one.
Oh, thank you for asking that question. Yes, we did introduce the anti-racism part in our hiring process. And I'll tell you that it has worked tremendously because, one, we have increased the number of people being hired who are people of color. And um, and it's not as though we targeted people of color to say, oh, we're going to make sure to do X, Y, and Z with them. We still have the screening process where there are no names and of course, there's no uh, race listed. And when we do things the way the uh, committee had found to be best practice, we found that people of color have been moved to the interview round, which they typically were not, right? So now they're getting that chance to interview. And um, recently, as recently as yesterday, I had someone mention to me that the way our process is, has been so helpful to them. Because they, this is a candidate who came in for an interview. She said typically she's anxious coming into a room full of people. But the way we communicate our process and the way we give them a step-by-step guidance as to what's going to take place when they're interviewing and then being able to come into the room virtually um, and seeing all these different faces. She felt comfortable because it wasn't just one race or the typical race that she was seeing at the table. And she felt that her voice was heard and respected during the interview. I had another gentleman who came in for an interview today and he said, you know, he wished other places would revamp their hiring process to be similar to ours because our process shows our commitment to social justice and equity.
Ms. King.
Um, so I know that you mentioned stuff about the secondary curriculum being revised. Can you go, can you dive deeper into um, what class areas are being revised? And if that would possibly mean more classes or different class frameworks?
So I can only go into that very briefly because I am not the principals at the secondary level. So I can only tell you that based on the information I received, I know they're looking at the math curriculum and um, social studies, English, and other content areas. And what changes will be made was, would be made based on teacher input after the group reviews all the curriculum. And the principal, of course, would, or each principal would, of course, talk to the staff, students, and communicate with families about any changes that are being made.
Any other questions for Ms. Cunningham? Mr. Demling.
So um, that was really helpful on the anti-bias training, uh, on the, on the um, the recruitment piece. And you, you know, we also talked about retention, so it was good to hear that, you know, our retention is also increasing. That's, and a lot of companies struggle with that because there's so much focus on the interview process and widening the pool that, that once employees get here. And I know we had talked a little bit, again, a, a little while back about uh, affinity groups and staff of color and, and new staff and how, how we, we support um, staff, especially in their first years to acclimate and, and whatnot. Is, is that something that we're still doing and, and can you talk about that a little bit?
We do have um, affinity groups still in, in Amherst. And I know this year, it was a struggle to continually meet as an affinity group. We also have a small group of individuals who are looking to create a mentoring program for staff who identify as persons of color or BIPOC. So that in their first and possibly second year of being here in Amherst, they have a staff, a dedicated staff member who looks like them and can understand their experiences to help guide them through the process of being here in Amherst and help them through uh, navigating some of the things that they may not have navigated in other districts. So that's something that we're looking at. There's also groups of individuals who um, would call themselves white allies to help to work on the culture in the district um, on it, from a different lens of, of individuals. So yes, affinity, so the short answer is yes, affinity groups are still in existence, but um, we're changing the face of what these affinity groups may look like.
Any other questions? Not seeing any, so um, thank you very much for that update, super helpful. Um, now we'll move on to um, chairs update. And I, I think the only update that I'll share um, is that uh, yesterday evening, Ms. Stanser and I joined Dr. Morris and Dr. Slaughter at the Amherst Town Council meet, meeting of the town council last night um, to present the regional school budgets that we approved weeks ago. Um, and uh, and it was a budget hearing as well. So um, lots of, lots of good discussion and comment. I think the, the, to sum up the sort of the primary, well, and there was a finance committee meeting on, further on that today. So um, uh, I would say um, biggest question areas were just understanding how we define um, level services budget um, and how that shows up in our budget documents. Um, and I'm trying to, I didn't write down the other one right now, but um, Ms. Stanser, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
No, I guess just that um, I guess the number of public comments that were concerned about the cut of the art position at the middle school and actually just um, people saying, you know, this is not the time to be cutting education.
Thank you, yeah, there was robust public comment um, also during the hearing, so. Uh, moving on to our next item, the school committee announcements. Does anybody um, from the committee have any announcement or updates they'd like to share? Seeing none. Um, and we're, we, we made up a lot of our lost time, so that's great. Um, so we'll move on now to our new and continuing business. And our one main item this evening is the presentation from the School Equity Task Force. And um, as I introduced earlier, um, Ms. Lauren Mills is joining us this evening to participate in that. And I'm not sure, do I turn it over to Ms. Lord or Ms. Mills?
I'm going to begin, she's going to end.
Okay, I will share my screen so that you all can see the.
Thank you, and while Chair McDonald gets the slides up, I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you Chair McDonald for welcoming this presentation. And thank you, of course, to our SETF School Equity Task Force members who worked really hard this whole year, trying to be supportive, gather information, get it to the school committee and district and just be helpful wherever we could. In some ways, we're like, why are we presenting this now? Because it's fixed, we're all going back to school, but no. Um, part of what has been highlighted, spotlight, just drawn more to the surface is some of the iniquities that are existing in all our institutions in this country. And so I want us to like have this on our public record and in our minds that we can go back and say, okay, this is something and we're working on it. And um, Assistant Superintendent Cunningham just showed a really solid way that Amherst is taking, Amherst Pelham Regional School District is taking huge or steps forward in this work. So it's not just performative or like on paper, we're actually doing stuff. So this is just a piece of that, our piece of that. Um, School Equity Task Force survey on experiences during and impacts of remote learning. Next slide, please. An overview of the SETF, okay, SETF. We only had sixty-two families that participated um, in this, I shouldn't say only, but thirty-nine percent were people of color identified and twenty-one percent were not people of color identified, but on free or reduced lunch. So some of the thirty-nine percent of the POC is also on free or reduced lunch. Next slide, please. What worked well? This pandemic has taught us a lot. It's been a lot of hard lessons, but there's also been some things that, oh, I really want to keep that post-pandemic. Um, so some feedback we got was the later start time. We've remedied that for our uh, secondary students. Three classes instead of seven, that's not sustainable, but we might want to look at what are ways we can de-densify some of that in the future. Being home with family, less distraction, the book bags, thank you to the librarians. I want to lift Susan Wells up because she was the first one I learned to do it. And there's probably all of our librarians, so please don't be offended if I don't sell your names, but thank you to the librarians and volunteers who did that. Small groups, breakout rooms, and then, yeah, teachers and paraprofessionals have been great and patient, but we knew that already. Next slide, please. Hopefully. So mental health, um, CPAC also did a survey and, and this is sort of similar to theirs. Of course, eight to ten reported negative effects on household mental health. There's no surprise there. Next slide, please. There was a, a desire and a need for more tutoring. And it was a pandemic and we're all doing the best we can, but maybe this is something even going forward that we need to look at. Like how do we get tutor services or make them more accessible if you don't have an IEP or a five oh four, or even if you do? Okay, next slide, please, thank you. And then, of course, there was more, we were more likely to experience fini- negative financial impacts if we were already on free and reduced lunch, because many of our families, me included, are in that where we can't work from home. Our jobs aren't such, my two jobs still haven't opened up. Not to be about me, but I'm just saying the financial impact on our families. And then I'm blessed because I can get a stimulus check, but there's a lot of our families that can't get that for whatever reason. So um, I know it's not the schools, yeah, we think about the whole child, so we also want to think about what they're going through. Sorry about all these dings, I just got some good news. Um, next slide, please, I'll turn my phone off maybe that'll help. Communication with the school, this is something that I know everybody has been doing their best with. But a lot of, in retrospect and moving forward, how do we communicate with families differently? This is a handful that we're not contacted. And maybe it's the squeaky wheel, but sometimes a squeaky wheel doesn't know how to reach out. And so communication, there'll be another slide, so I'm not going to take up too much time. Um, next slide, please. And so communication, there'll be another slide. So I'm not going to take up too much time. Next slide, please. Oh, here it goes. That is the other slide. I guess I'm doing it. Is this number 10? No, this is the last one, I think. Okay. Communication is one definite way to break the isolation of the pandemic. I do know that we had a survey recently and a lot of families hadn't responded. So the guidance counselors or the high school staff called every family that hadn't responded. And then they followed up with a second call. So I know right now presently, our communication is really chugging, chugging. But how can we do it besides just email and surveys? And so that's, we want to look at that, think about that. How do we get more out there to the neighborhoods that, you know, might need us to be there? And then there is no one site to go to or general number to call for information. And our website has a lot of information, but it is still tricky. You need to know where to go to look for the information. So that's just food for thought. And thank you very much. Next slide, please. And I believe I'm handing it over to you, Ms. Mills.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for inviting me this evening and allowing me to speak as a member of the SETF, the School Equity Task Force. And I'm also a parent, so I'm speaking as a parent as well. I, we did this survey, I believe it was in the beginning of January. And as Heather said, and as, you know, many in the district were concerned about what the effects of the so remote learning were having. I am not like a doctor or psychologist or anything like that. So from what I observed in my own children and what I know all of us have heard from the responses from other parents that, you know, called in and left voice messages and attended other school. School, school committee meetings have been very like distressing, distressing as well to hear, you know, what they were going through. And also I know that, you know, members of the school committee have made the comment that, you know, the, the stress of dealing with this new normal of, you know, not being able to see friends, not being able to be in the school with your teachers, even though that's not the case now. That's still, you know, may and is most likely going to have an impact on students. Not just, you know, it's not just going to end once, you know, schools open up fully. So these were some of the questions that the School Equity Task Force came up with that, you know, I guess are for all of us to consider and take, take in. How will this commitment to social justice and an anti-racist curriculum be accomplished? I'm sorry, I should have started with the top. ARPS has committed to a system that is dedicated to social justice and multiculturalism as part of their mission statement, but we know on the, in the same breadth or in the same schools district that we do have challenges around bias, around equity and disparity in our school system. So that was one of the questions. Individual families have sought tutoring, mental health counseling, social contact and contact the schools about their needs. But not necessarily from our, our only survey, there wasn't a big response back from the schools. And, you know, I'm one of the parents who, you know, I, I like to, you know, know what's going on. But as Heather mentioned from the findings of the survey, a lot of parents, you know, they're, they're busy or they're just maybe not, they don't know where to, to look or, or to call. And so maybe they're not getting the information that they need to like, you know, advocate or be supportive of their, their child as, as well as they would want to. Can, can, how can the district retain staff of color and build on these programs? I'm just going to read all of them. What data will demonstrate that the district has effectively addressed these issues? How will the district communicate these programs and provide ongoing communication to families in need? And I think, yeah, that's a big thing, communication, because there may be things that the school district is doing that parents don't, don't know about or, and, and we're just, you know, forming our opinions are from, you know, what we, what we don't see happening because we don't know what the, the school district is doing. So the presentation from Lauren Cunningham, it would be nice if, you know, the SETF had a better communication to know all the things that, you know, the school district and Amherst schools are doing, administration is doing. Next slide, please. Thank you. I got this, this next information from a, a website. It's called Brilia and it is like, if you want further information, you can go to the website. But it says the effects that so, the, the effects that so remote learning likely has, likely has already had on Amherst students. I'm just going to read the quote from the website. Not only does screen time take away from our personal and quality time, studies show it increases anxiety and restlessness. Studies show that too much screen time can make children exhibit symptoms of ADHD. Limiting, limiting screen time and taking control of content on screen helps you discover more of the amazing non-tech driven world around us. It's a common space to live in. And then it has three articles of how video games affect your child's development, parental control, tricks to monitoring screen time for kids, screen time in kids with attention issues, what you need to know. And before the whole remote learning, we always had the message, you know, from doctors and that, you know, too much screen time, you know, you have to monitor it. And then now our children were on the screens for school like six hours a day or, or so. And then plus that, because they had the ability to use a computer, they would use it even after school ended. So I think that, you know, that really has had an impact on, you know, our children and our students. Next slide, please. This is a, some information that I got from the ARPS website around restorative, restorative practice resources. And I wasn't sure if people could see the, the left, where the left rounded, you know, image that has restorative practice in the, the center. So I was just going to read that. And it says restorative practices. Again, this is a guide for educators. It's a, well, it's a, it's information from 2014. That's on the ARPS website. And it says, because at the SETF, we've, you know, struggled with, you know, is, does this school, what restorative practices do they have in place? You know, is their miss, mission, does it expand to anti-racism? Work for, you know, school-wide administrators and staff and all that? Or is it just like for a social awareness? Is it multiculturalism? So there's like all these terms and we weren't really sure, you know, exactly what the schools, what, what the school is implementing. But restorative practices should include to address and discuss the needs of the school community. Build healthy relationships between educators and students. Resolve conflict, hold individuals and groups accountable, repair harm and restore positive relationships, and reduce, prevent and improve harmful behavior. The, the right-hand side, I hope I'm saying that right, is another visual from the web, from the restorative practice resources on ARPS website. It says a tale of two schools. And one side talks about, or shows like the progression of like, if you have a zero tolerance, tolerance education system, how that affects students and then the difference between that and, and restorative practices in an educational system and how it, restorative practices, you know, are, have a better outcome for students and I think for the whole school. Next slide, please. Yeah, this is just some more information that I got from the website, the ARPS website. And again, books are a great, a great way for parents to, you know, get their children curious about other cultures, other people. So I think this, you know, is, is a, a good list, even though I'm not sure when this was put together. I think it was, it says 2006. And as also was mentioned before, that there have been other book clubs or book discussions around social justice and racial justice. And I just want to commend and, and thank the Quaker Farm PGO for supporting Racial Identities Book Club that I think we've gone through four books and we're going to a, to a fifth book. So that, that has been a good experience to connect with parents and be supported by the PGO. Next slide, please. Yeah, I, I do want to reiterate that I really, I really feel like there has to be, there is a need and so there has to be a strong demand from the community. And as a member of SETF again, we are, you know, trying to be, be that voice and advocate for the needs that we see the community is having. So we really need a budget from the school committee that supports restorative practices that develops the love of learning and affinity for others, says to others, but for others. Counseling and tutoring for any student who requests it based on the school-wide effects of COVID and loss of in-person learning. And I'm just going to stop there because as it is now, it feels like unless, you know, you're individually advocating for your child, that's one thing. Or if your child has a special needs, that's another thing. But again, the COVID pandemic, the effects of COVID on, on the all students, whether it's small or great, needs to be addressed and it needs to be, it needs to be seen that it's, it's, it's an issue. So I would hope that the school committee can provide counseling and tutoring for all students who request it. And we have suggested using the family center to expand this work. And, and so we would like to use the family center as a place to practice restorative justice and provide resources to families and staff so that students feel comfortable, heard, acknowledged in their lived experiences and are able to speak for themselves and speak up for others. Continued use of technology to, to close educational disparities and address each student and their individual learning styles and needs. Next slide, please. Anti-racist curriculum. Again, there's a lot of terms, so I had to look this up again. And I'm just going to read a definition that I got from a website called the Committee for, for Children. Again, there's, there's many, there's many, I guess you could say, doctors or leaders and, and, or consultants that can speak, you know, more to these, these things than just, you know, a parent. But I wanted to just share a definition of anti-racist curriculum. It, it says, from this website, it says, addresses power dynamics and equity. An anti-racist curriculum addresses power dynamics and equity, brings awareness to prejudice while promoting respect for and value of differences, falls under social justice education, which centers around development of social awareness of inequities along with critic, with a critical lens that encourages social action. And I think that's what we want to be, we want to see active participation in, in this work. Next slide, please. This is the last slide and I, I, it might seem a little off, but I think, you know, besides the work that Ms. Cunningham shared that the district is doing, we often get like when these external things happen, like the pandemic or, you know, violence that has, you know, happened, you know, in different parts of, you know, the, the country that affects, you know, us and, and, and bring these, these issues to the forefront racial race racism and, and violence. We, we need to not just like send out a letter saying that we condemn it, but I think again, it's what, what are the other action steps that we can take? And I, you know, just in my research, I came across this. And it, it shows 19, 19 towns, I believe in Massachusetts that have declared racism a public health crisis. I'm not sure if Northampton is on here, but I think Northampton is one town that's very nearby that has declared racism a public health crisis. And maybe that's something as a school committee and as a school community, we can think about doing. Yeah, that's the end of my, my part. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Pretty comprehensive. Do, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Mills or Ms. Lord? And I'll also note that Mr. Harrington is also one of our committee reps on the SETF. Any questions or comments? Mr. Demling.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate the, the focus on the theme of, of communication, the need for proactive communication and, and how that relates to the mental health needs of students as we return from COVID. I feel like, you know, one of the ways in which systemic racism manifests is that, like the squeaky wheel against the grease, right? And so if you, if you know how to, if you know how to work the system, if you know how to communicate, if, if you have the language, if you have the tools, that you can, you can get the services you need. And, and if you don't, then, then you can, you have additional barriers. And so I think one of the slides mentioned the website. And I would second that, that, you know, there are, there are some times there are services that are available, whether that's, you know, support for families through the family center, or whether that's academic support or, or mental health support. And it's, it's not easily discoverable, right? And so there's, it's one thing to have these things available. It's another thing to be easily discoverable. So actually, Dr. Morris, I, I don't know if you've done some thinking already. And I know we've talked a lot, school committee, about, we know it's going to be increasing mental health needs as students come back, especially next, next fall, as people really settle in. And, you know, I, I'm sure that if students are, or families are loud or proactive about their need or, you know, are of their own accord, are coming to tell staff of their mental health needs, that they'll be addressed. But, but then there's all the students and families who aren't going to feel that comfortable, right? And so what, given this, this is going to be another abnormal year, right? Pandemic recovery, you know, what, what's, what's our early thinking on how do we proactively reach out to and monitor, you know, students so that we're proactively addressing their mental health needs, right? Because we don't want to have like half the school year go by and then have kids really struggling and then only then intervene in the crisis. And obviously these things affect, you know, disadvantaged students, you know, more so. So. Um, and obviously, these things affect, um, you know, disadvantaged students, you know, more so, so. Um, I don't know if the initial thoughts on that.
Yeah, I'll share just two quick ones. One is that it's certainly something that we're planning on doing uh, over the summer. I think it's gonna be hard to survey students or to come to conclusions until they're in our, until many of them are in our buildings. And I think well, much, we're even two days in at the elementary level, we're getting a sense of where. Uh, students are, not just in what their, you know, surveys would say, but what they're literally telling us, so. I I think we're gonna have a great opportunity to understand where students are from the last two months of the school year at the middle school and high school level. I think the second piece is is then utilizing the summer to do some action planning, uh, it might involve some surveying or focus groups. Of students and we are looking to utilize some of our stimulus funds in a way to support uh, the well-being of students and in all the ways that you mentioned. Uh, I think Ms Mills' presentation was spot on in terms of highlighting that as a major need as we head to the next school year. And that this pandemic, and we've talked about this multiple times, has been experienced. It it's one pandemic and everyone's experiencing it in their own unique way, uh, and. Uh, not equally across the board, as you noted. So, you know, we are going to take a keen look on what students experience as they're in the building. We know that's not all students, but it is gonna be a good snapshot for us and then to do some really action planning over the summer. Uh, with the stimulus dollars that we have to figure out what supports, additional supports do we need and how to make sure that families are aware and can access those.
Um, I just wanted to add, I had made a note um, during the budget hearing last night with the town council. That um. One of the council members asked. How they can help, what what we can do to help them communicate how we're going to be ready. To help the students with, you know, and and advocate, not advocate, but communicate. For them to be able to tell people what the schools are doing to be prepared. For the issues that are gonna come up when students come back to school. So I, um, that stood out for me last night.
I I have a a quick question, um, maybe it's not quick, but um. I recall sort, um, maybe it was at the end of last school year that um, S C T F was looking exactly. Trying to dig into that a little bit more on communication and outreach directly to families. Um, and I was wondering if there, if you've had further conversations about that and sort of ideas about other ways. That the that the district or the school committee um, can be connecting with with the families that you're, that you're talking to. I guess that's a question for our S C T F reps or Ms Mills.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if you.
Sorry, I apologize.
Can you say it again?
Um, my question for the, for our S C, for either of the three of you from S C T F is. I I recall that the conversations were beginning probably last summer. Um, about sort of how how to, ways to engage and and and. Conduct outreach to the communities, um, particularly communities of color within within our district. And I just wondered if you, if you had insight or thoughts or sort of, you know. Um, more deeper than what we we were talking about then, that you would be helpful for the district or the school committee to. To sort of work on in terms of outreach.
My first response would be, um, anybody who's listening who has ideas, please, oh, I didn't wait for you to call on me, Chairman McDonald, I'm sorry.
You don't have to, I I was directing my question at one of you three.
Is to please um, email, call it in, any ideas that we're not gonna think of, because more heads. Is better than like a hundred heads is better than three. Um, but I know that the pandemic's really squished it a lot, no excuses, but I I'm hoping to be out in the apartment complexes weekly. On some rotating schedule, just sitting there with a chair and some water. And be accessible that way. I also think when we have community events again, especially ones like Kwanzaa, Juneteenth. Maybe having a table set up just with information about who we are, how we can, just like the face-to-face building relationships. Those are my two ideas. I know other people have ideas, but we would also welcome any ideas from the community, because we're all the. The district, yeah.
I would just add quickly, um. Every week, we get a newsletter from the superintendent and um, so I get information from there. Uh, but I don't think all um, all parents, you know, they may not. They might not check their email, they may not look for information, you know, in that way. So I had suggested um, S C T F, um, a newsletter. Um, that could share other, you know, community information and other important events. Um, that could just be, that would actually be printed and put into people's hands or, you know. You know, be able to be distributed to their door, um, just like a one-page newsletter. It'd be helpful.
I see two questions, I don't know who was first, so I'll start with Ms King.
Uh, I have a question angled towards Dr Morris, um, you're discussing a lot about the summer, but I'm kind of curious. From this data, we see that eight out of ten um, people are experiencing mental health crisis or having mental health issues. What are you doing now currently and specifically in the high school around that?
Sure, so I wanna compliment our mental health folks at our high school, uh, and you're right for noting that I should have mentioned this earlier. Um, who have been doing tremendous work doing uh, office hours, uh, proactive work, our folks in the Bright program who. Uh, are working with a broad range of students right now and adjustment counselors and psychologists who are trying to. Keep tabs on students that they can't see in person, which is, which is a unique challenge. So, in my opinion, you know, uh, they've really risen to the challenge to try to meet students' needs where they are. Um, and have done proactive outreach for high school students, um, the communication again for families has been really critical. Uh, you know, sometimes it's thought of more as a K to eight piece, but I think in particularly. As it relates to a pandemic, that family communication at the high school has also been critical. Uh, in maintaining those connections for students and so. It's not something we often talk about because it's not something that I'm sort of at liberty disclose in terms of some of the interventions that have. Gone on for individual students, but I I do think the committee and the community should be aware that at the high school level. Uh, our counseling team has been working uh, in in all sorts of ways, and that's including Summit Academy as well. Uh, to meet student needs, um, and to uh, best support students uh, all along the way. Uh, and they've really taken the lead on that, um, you know, even going back to last spring. Uh, when things were much less organized, um, to be able to do that, so, you know, that that's really the framing. That we've had is supporting the work, we've also done some work, um, Dr Brady facilitated a group of the leaders. You know, thinking about homework, thinking about how we support students, uh, in great acquisition and 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 those, some of those challenges. To acknowledge that they're going on for students and how do we kind of share some grave forgiveness. Uh, during this difficult time, which has been critical for students and their well-being as well. Um, I think the last thing I'll say is, uh, one of the largest things. That we've also done is maintaining a later start time, which all the evidence um, suggests, but nationally. Um, as well as in Massachusetts, is one of the greatest contributors to improving students' mental health, is not forcing them to be at school at seven thirty in the morning. Um, and I know it sounds simplistic and the evidence is very convincing that that's going to, will continue to contribute. Uh, this year and then will be implemented more fully next year, uh, as a strategy to support well-being of students.
Did you have a follow-up, Ms King, or is it a separate question?
I did, um, I should have reiterated, what have you added on that? Like, what has been additional that you didn't do last year to support um, more students with mental health issues?
Sure, so um, I think. A couple of things, um, one is I think, you know, we certainly, if this is a topic that the committee wants to have, we could have the mental health team from the high school come. Because I think they could describe uh, what they've done in a drastically better way than I can summarize, so I don't wanna be disrespectful to their work. Um, but I think as as it relates to the difference between last spring and this fall and throughout this year. Just we've been much more organized about keeping tabs on students, uh, making sure that uh, there's more regular communication, even the. Kind of how you sign up for an appointment with a counselor, like, you know, some of the electronic systems have been developed uh, in much more thorough ways than. Last spring when we were kind of in reactive mode, instead of uh, much more proactive approach this year. Also, that just in general, the teachers have been, you know, had more time to prepare for what was happening and a lot of the PD we had this summer about. Distance learning wasn't really just focused on the uh, more academic side, it was about how to support student well-being and making sure students. Weren't on screens or didn't feel like they had to be screens on every single second of every single day to accomplish their learning. Uh, what are different ways at the high school level that students could still be activated uh, and learning without being glued to a screen. Uh, from nine to two thirty. And so those are some of the ways, but certainly it's a topic we want, I'm sure we could have folks come in and and share more specific details on that.
Ms Spitzer.
Um, first, I just wanna think. Ms Mills, Ms Ms Lord and Mr Harrington, for all the hard work on S C T F over. This presentation happens once a year, but I know you guys are serving for the entire year, so thank you very much, um. The, I'm happy to hear that we're gonna potentially be using federal dollars to help uh, meet the needs for counseling and tutoring. And I think everybody's said that already, so thank you, um, I'm happy to hear that. I guess my question has been, um. And maybe this is something more agenda planning, so I will, I won't go too far into it, but I just wanted to understand. If the survey that we do annually of students to kind of ask about the environment and how things. Because we've had this nice longitudinal data set that we've created and now we have the pandemic. Um, I'm curious if that's still happening and if there's any potential to potentially um, ask about some of these mental health needs. Or other count, you know, types of needs that might be unique to the pandemic could be introduced through that uh, mechanism that we have annually.
So we, yes, so we did not survey students in, um, and partially because of the pandemic, um, but we did. Uh, I did get a report from the mental health uh, team at the middle school, high school, it was discussed about whether we should um, survey folks or not, and they opted for not. Um, and again, if this is something that the committee would like, um, certainly they could have them back and describe their thinking and their report of what they're seeing from students. From well-being perspective, challenges they're seeing and interventions they're doing uh, in much more detail. Given that this was an S C T F presentation, I wasn't respectfully prepared to talk in the level of detail that are coming to be asked to, but if that's a topic the committee would like. We certainly can ask the experts to come back uh, and be able to do that.
Well, we'll come back to that in our agenda planning. Ms Mills, did you have a?
Yeah, I um, just wanted to say that, um, it sounds like the counseling services are. I'm not sure, but it sounds like they're one-on-one or um, like, uh, some of the. Uh, counseling lumbadars, you know, have been uh, in a group for parents, but. I really feel like in order to um, enhance the school culture, um, to be more inclusive. And, you know, to really um, support students at this time, there there has to actually be like group. Group, um. Group um, support, likes, i- and not just like, okay, I'm going through something and, you know. I'm gonna go see the counselor, but, you know. At at different ages, um, and I'm just going by, you know, a parent's experience. You know, nobody wants to feel like they're singled out or look like they have a problem. But we know that, you know, the whole community has gone through something, so to me, the. The school needs to address it like in a collective way and not just to be like, okay, you. You, you're going through something and so we're going to deal with this uh, on an individual basis.
So I'm, I'm just conscious of time, because we do have some, um, some folks outside of our committee joining us. Um, shortly before eight for our executive session, so. Um, I'll give one more pass for the final comment or question. Thank you, and um, I know, I know we've said this several times, but thank you again, um, Ms Mills and and. Ms Lord and Mr Harrington for all the work that the school like Woody Task Force is doing and has been doing. And for bringing this um, presentation to to our meeting tonight, so thank you and look forward to further conversations about some of these issues with you all.
Thank you.
Um, and now we're, we are on to uh, future agenda planning, um. I apologize, I don't have that right in front of me right now, I don't know where it disappeared to.
I can, I can share that if it's helpful.
Yeah, if you have that handy, that would be, so our next meeting, um, Regional School Committee is on the fourth of May. No, twenty.
You're right.
Yeah. It just seems so long. We've no, we've never gone more than a week without a meeting, um. So on that, um, on that date, um, as Mr Demling alluded to earlier, uh, we will be um, taking up that middle school grade span report. And talking about our next steps, which includes not just, um. Uh, not just the outreach, which is a significant portion of it, but also just sort of refreshing hours in the community's understanding of. How a decision like this needs to be made, um, because it is first a regional decision, but then understanding the the sequence of. Outreach and decision-making that we'll need to make. Um, we are, um, plan to have this C P R in for their annual report um, and presentation, and I believe. As uh, somebody mentioned earlier, they also conducted a survey recently. Um, and they are planning to join us um, for that meeting. Um. Looks like we also have slotted, um, the Fall twenty twenty-one discussion as well as the M S B A. Um, Middle School Roof Statement of Interest for the Accelerated Repair Program. Um, which is something I think every year since I've been on the committee and probably longer than that, we've been submitting SOIs for that. Any other?
I'm Ms Seager. This is more of, uh, this doesn't directly relate to this, but um, I had thought there was another meeting in the month of April. Uh, so it's more of a school committee announcement, but this is then technically my last meeting with you all tonight. And I just wanted to mention that, so, I'm sorry, I didn't think of it sooner and I'm sorry I didn't read this sooner. Um, but I wanted to note that and I'm gonna encourage Leverett to try to have somebody at the May fourth meeting because they're gonna have to regroup, I think the night before. Um, because our town meeting is, I believe, May first, so hopefully you'll have a Leverett rep then. Um, I I know I've been here a short time and it's been a pleasure to work with you all, it's been a very short but intense period of time.
I was about to say, it was, it was very short, I think you squeezed in probably at least two years' worth of school committee work in the time that you've been with us, so. Um, and uh, yeah, thank, thanks for letting us know, I'm sorry that we didn't know ahead of time, but I I do wanna, I'll just. Sort of go a little off-topic, but you were, um, uh, do you recall that we we um. It had some, several conversations, um, before you joined us on on region and I think, um, sort of worried about the workload. And even though the workload was immense, um, I really enjoyed having you and I think you've been a really um, productive and helpful part of our committee. So I really appreciate the your service over this past very intense year. I'm sorry to see you go.
Yeah, thank you, it's the end of my uh, six years in Leverett on the committee there, so, um, and I I'm kind of sorry, I didn't. Wasn't on this committee sooner, I've enjoyed the experience, so thank you all.
Any other, um, comments on the agenda planning? I see Mr Demling's hand, yeah.
I can't believe this pitcher is bringing up the superintendent evaluation process and the, uh, so I'll bring it up, um. We should probably uh, set the vote for that and then reverse engineer. The steps we need to do in order to get there, if we're gonna finish that on time this year, which we probably should.
I think, uh, if you scroll down, Dr Morris, we, there's some placeholder points on there, but we do need to talk about the tool. Um, and probably need to move that artifact presentation to.
I added something, at least for that conversation that occurred at the next meeting I made for, is that sound okay, Mr Demling?
Mr Demling.
Do we still have a s- an active superintendent evaluation subcommittee? Because that would be, those would be the members who would more want to chime in on schedule.
I believe Ms Spitzer has been chair of that and I don't know who else.
It was me, I think, forgive me if I say somebody who is not actually on it, but I believe Mr Sullivan was was on it with me. And, um, yes, Ms Stanser. So, um, perhaps we should. Find a time to meet, although I I do think it should be pretty straightforward, because although. I don't want to creep into talking about the subject, but we, we may want to think if we want to rethink the format in light of the, the year we've had. We can talk about that later.
So that would be probably a good you, a month between now and May fourth, if that, that subcommittee could meet and we can, we can circle back, we frame this on the agenda, but it could be sort of just how to, as you just framed it, sort of what, what process and what tool do we want, even if it's not sort of the, the actual tool to review. And I think, I see Ms. Lord's hand up.
I know that we're thinking about this in a little while, but I don't know if we want to put it on to start talking about the idea of doing a land acknowledgement and other ways we interact and support the indigenous community in our school and district and curriculum.
Thank you.
Let that be June, since we're not going to meet again in April and May looks full. Or do you think that's too soon?
I think if you're okay with
land acknowledgement, I think it's okay to put. Because the other stuff goes in with that, so it's not performative. In my opinion. Thank you.
Any other? Ms. Dancer.
I guess a question, when we do the, the 2021, let's see, I can't see it. Can you scroll back up a little bit on the document? The Fall 2021 Discussion, based on the, this evening's discussion, can that include something about the mental health preparation?
So I had separated them out to that being more of the format of Fall 21. And then I added, based on the conversation tonight from S C T F and Ms. Kane's comment, a separate item. You may not be able to see it on May 18th. It was about mental health and wellbeing of secondary students.
Thank you.
Because I think, I think they're two different things and I agree they're related, but I actually think looking at them separately might be beneficial.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Any other comments or ads? Ms. Lord, is your hand up again or is it? No, okay. Great. Okay. Awesome. Moving on, warrant report. Ms. Spitzer, do you have any warrants to report?
I do. Just one. So I, Carrie Spitzer authorized for my signature to payables in the amount of sixty-six thousand, nine hundred, sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cent for the warrant dated April 2nd, 2021. This included general fund expenses of thirty-one thousand, nine hundred, thirty-seven dollars and three cents, revolving fund expenses of twelve thousand, seven hundred, seventy-one dollars and forty-four cents, grant fund expenses of twenty-one thousand, two hundred, eighty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents and other funds in the amount of nine hundred, sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents for capital. And I signed this on April 2nd, 2021.
Thank you. Next up, we have accepting gifts, and I don't believe there are any gifts this evening. And so with that, I am going to make a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of A P E A. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares, and I declare with no intention of returning to open session. Is there a second?
Second.
And moved by McDonald and seconded by Spitzer, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny. Ms. Kenny says aye. Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer?
Ms. Dancer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan? I can read your lips. Sullivan, aye, and McDonald, aye. And so the motion passes unanimously. And so we will now move to executive session. Thank you to Emmer's Media for broadcasting our meeting this evening.